Ready?
Yep.
All right, we're calling me into order. Can you call the board, please, Mr. Plankow?
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. What are the minutes?
February 26, 2019.
The February 26, 2019 meeting. If I can have a second, please. One second. Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Is there any discussion? Okay. Now, call the board, please.
Steve Jeffries.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Linda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Hack.
Hi.
The motion carried. And that takes us to special reports, please.
We have our standing monthly report with Chris. He's here from Icon to give the board an update on our construction projects.
Hey, both projects are pretty much exactly on track with each other now. Weather's turning, a little work being on to the air, which is good. We've got some good news since last meeting with the windows. Right now, they're coming mid-May with a chance of that coming about three weeks. We don't have to worry that we would have had today with coming. Masonry inside the building up on the second floor will be complete at Concord this week and probably Wednesday next weekend at Madison. We're done with masonry in the building outside of the chainsaw walls. Painting has started in both buildings, in areas, the in the cafeteria, gymnasium, kitchen, moving into the office area. Tech contractors out there now, the upholstery are gonna be started a little shortly later. Technology cable, everything's moving right on. We're upstairs with the infrastructure now. We're just about, just about done with it on the first floor. We're moving up on the second. Things are moving well, and the weather's cooperating in our favor right now.
Great.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Hack? We both took a tour yesterday.
Yeah, River View. Yeah, it was just such a transformation when we were all there, I don't know, gosh, was it before Christmas? Probably in the Valentine.
Yeah.
Yeah. You just, you cannot believe the transformation of the building. So, all the roofs are on, the second floor, the buildings are, the rooms are defined, the pods are defined. Painting was going on when we were actually taking the tour. They have temporary heat, so it's all dried out, and it just, it really is coming along. The, you know, we saw pictures of these, you know, descriptions of the veneer, and then some of the veneer is going on, the veneer brick. I will tell you that it is much more appealing in person than it was even in the drawings, from my perspective, anyway. So, I think we're really on course and speed to have some terrific buildings. And I know that we're also, we talked about schedule a little bit yesterday, and I think that's gonna be on the agenda as well, but it just really, we've had some bad weather that it's affected us, but we've clearly come a lot away.
Yes.
Well, any of these change orders that are on here now, I think we're up to change order number 27 or 28, will that delay the project at all?
No. Majority of the change orders that are on there is work that we already did. Some of it just, till we worked out what we wanted to do with the windows, we didn't hold up the work on the change orders where there was some glass involved, so we backed it work. So, nothing's holding anything up.
Since this is our first rodeo, so to speak, in terms of a construction project in our district, we were kind of concerned about how many change orders there were. And as we found out through the experts at Icon, we're really not above, more than anyone else.
No, I think there's 30 change orders at Concord, maybe 26 in Madison, and that is not a lot.
Okay.
There's projects where they're, at this point, that will not.
Sounds good.
This is fine. It's nothing outrageous. The big ones are unknowns.
Can you get the board a real quick update on that one casting that needs to be recast?
Oh, it's already recast, yes. We had the three tanks, concrete tanks for the SDS treatment system at Concord. The manufacturer, when they were making one, the sleeve had floated. It actually floated into concrete, so it was not at the right inward angle. They could have capped that, ported, put another sleeve in and that, but we just said, no, we're making new one.
You wanted it the way it was designed, or it was a little bit the way it was built for?
Not an issue. But they asked about an issue, and the answer, coming down.
Great.
That was all taken care of. It's just.
Yeah. You just, again, you just can't believe the transformation. It just really, it's looking terrific, and, you know, they're taking the full effect because they have temporary windows in place, some plastic, but we get to see the views out the windows and the dynamics of the building. It's not only gonna be a great place for learning, it's gonna be really great, it's gonna be aesthetically really appealing as well.
Yeah.
Really, I think it's, we're moving in a great direction.
Chris, I have one question regarding the roadway out there in Concord. When does the state of Ohio or Concord get involved with the markings on the roadway out there for traffic out in that area?
The markings on the roadway as far as?
How much traffic flow are, are they already determined that it's no problem at all, truck traffic? Do they do?
From what I understand now, we're, yeah, they're, they may come back in after the fact to do that, but they would do that. The only thing we're doing is removing, which would affect your speed, is the one downhill grade sign, flashing sign is being moved off. But the speed limit is not changed.
Would the board be interested in taking another visit sometime soon?
Hmm.
Any particular building? I know the last time we were at River View.
I personally want to go to Parkside, so.
Go to Parkside?
But I'm gonna do that regardless of what.
Yeah, I was at Parkside a couple of weeks ago, but I'm, I'm happy to go anywhere you want.
I have a feeling it's probably changed in the last couple of weeks.
I bet it has.
Is there any particular day or a time of day?
I don't know.
I mean, do we want to do what we did last time and just do it before the board meeting?
That, I mean, I should have been saying after work would be best for me, so that would qualify.
Do you think we do it before our next?
April 29th, the next board meeting's a Monday?
It'll be warmer out there, too.
Yeah, you want to give yourself a little more time, because I can guarantee you, you're gonna spend a lot more time in the buildings out there. There's so much more to see, and you're actually.
And there's upstairs to go to as well.
It's there. Everything is there now.
So, do we want to say like, I mean, like, how long you're talking? Our board meeting starts at 7:00. If we get there at 6:00?
How early?
5:30?
An hour and a half, almost two hours.
Yeah, so I would say you can get there at 5:00.
Okay. Can everyone do 5:00 o'clock on April 29th?
Yeah, if you do that, you'll give me ample time to walk.
Can you do it?
I'll just tell them.
Jimmy, you okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So, April 29th at 5:00 p.m., please.
Parkside.
What do we say? Did we decide?
Parkside.
Is that a parkside?
It's rocking now.
That's where Tom's going.
That would be better for everybody. It's easier to get into site.
Parkside?
Yeah.
So, it's April 29 at 5:00?
Yes, please.
Is 5:00 or 5:30 better? Two hours might be a little longer.
5:00 would probably be better.
You think so?
We still have a chance at over here as well, which is getting settled and everything, so I got.
You can spend a good hour, 15, even hour and a half, getting there and then make it here by quarter to seven.
We plan on having a basketball game in Finish Gym over there, so.
We don't have any hoops, so.
Loop, loop.
Jimmy can get in the hoop then.
Virtual.
They're adjustable. Five feet.
Are you ready?
That offers any time. I mean, it's not as a group where we're out there, even if I'm, it doesn't matter if I'm in.
I can come by lower.
Yeah. Yeah, you can go individually. All you have to do is check in at the trailer there and get a hat on, and I'll take you through.
I'll let the guys know, too, if you're watching, too. That's why we had you here.
And just bring the keys if you're going over to Madison.
Yeah. That's just certain money. And as I recall from the conversation yesterday, that the staff from Leeway Elementary did stop by and take a look at it.
Yes, took them in two tours because it's kind of difficult to take that many, and they were really safe about the building, spent some time, some of the long, that's Sharpies and one of the raider names on the roof.
Awesome.
Lots of good questions, lots of lots of excitement.
Great. Anything else, guys?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks.
I also asked Mr. Boers, as we're giving our report from our director, to give us a quick update on athletic department, athletic programs. We'll probably have him back in also in a couple of months to give a more comprehensive report with a lot of accomplishments from some of our athletes over the course of the year. A lot of good things happened.
And bringing, probably, people in person could be the kind of goal, too. I mean, try to be somewhat comprehensive. First of all, thanks for having me, giving me a couple of minutes. Appreciate it. All right, some updates. Any questions along the way, whatever else you guys need, because the lasers not work on the TV, so I may be moving back and forth. Okay, a couple of things. We can go with some highlights first. I tried to stick with the high school. I was looking at middle school, was looking at alum. We got some great things going on from everybody, but just, just became so much, and we'll at least start with the high school stuff. So, these accomplishments, teams and individuals through the winter to this point. First off, so we got highlights from the course, me and the cross-country course. Cheyenne Durr was a regional qualifier, pretty awesome. Our boys' cross-country team were regional qualifiers.
I guess so.
Yeah.
Asia Halfa, 37th in the state of Ohio. Tremendous picture, Asia, getting his clap out before he left. On the court, we had our volleyball team, which was conference champs again. They were district champs, and it was pretty nice to be at Menter. They were regional semifinalists, which is the stage right before the state tournament. And Coach Schultz was WRC Coach of the Year, so that was pretty sweet. Also on the court, tennis court, Sarah Salin and Angelica Ross were district qualifiers. That also was the, right before the state meet, and then Angelica was able to advance and became a state qualifier, so she was down there as well. So, pretty proud of her. On the field, football team was conference champ the first time in five years, a regional semifinalist, and happened to have the school's first-ever playoff victory, so it was pretty exciting. Proud of those guys. Also, yes, sir.
What coaches had any rewards from football?
Yeah, I was fortunate enough to be WRC Co-Coach of the Year. I was Lake County, big school, Co-Coach of the Year with Coach Rivasell from Menter, and was a finalist for the Bob Ritley Award, which was Newt Harrell, Northeast Ohio, one of the awards old Perry coach, who was very influential in football in the area. Thanks. More on the field, Taylor McCollie, one of the football players, has his picture from him committing to Lake Erie College, but the reason he's up there is he was the Max Prep Ohio High School Player of the Week for all sports after a week-long victory over Nordenia. He was the leading tackler in all divisions in the entire state of Ohio.
Look how big he is, you know?
Exactly. That's why I was leading tackler, you know? From the back, wrestling team won the Riverside Rumble, were WRC champs the first time in 11 years. We had nine district qualifiers from the wrestling team. Chris Roach was a state alternate, and Coach Richner was WRC Coach of the Year. So, proud of those guys. Also, from the court, Marissa Radmore, sophomore, she was ninth in the state in blocked shots, according to Max Prep.
Awesome.
So, there's your, at the bottom, kind of stats and blocks. Court also, our boys' basketball team hosted the first-ever home playoff game, so that was special, because they were obviously a higher seed over Mayfield. Andrew Keller did a couple crazy things on the court as well as the football field for us, but scored 55 points in a single game versus Chardon, which made that much sweeter, and he also scored his 1,000th point of his career this season. So, pretty cool stuff there. The pool, Kyle Silver, seventh in the state in the Hunter Butterfly, Charles Marshall, 20th in the state in the Hunter Backstroke, and Ian Diffenbacher, Eddie Kokos, Charles Marshall, and Kyle Silver, 24th in the state in the 200 medley relay. So, there's Eddie, there's Ian, there's Kyle, there's Charles, and there's a guy who just happened to be in the pit. It's a tough time getting him out of there, but, so all four of those guys went down to state, and a couple of them had a couple of different events, so proud of them. Signing day, we had some of our athletes at signing. There's a good chunk more coming up this spring, but these are the ones that have made their decisions. From left to right, Nick Blocker, cutting Mellon University, Division III school, Asia Halfa, full ride to run, Bowling Green State University in the middle, and Mike Wojcikowski, Case Western Reserve University. Obviously, with the full ride to run, AJ in the middle speaks volumes about what they thought of his abilities and his academics. Important to note that because the outer two guys are football guys, they kind of know a little more about them, they both were top recruits for both of their respective universities, talking to their head coaches, so pretty, pretty awesome to see, especially, you know, when we start talking about academics and taking the next step. Happenings and updates, a few things to update everyone about. Twitter, we're trying to ramp up the athletic Twitter. For those of you that are following, trying to follow along a little more, we got word out to all the coaches to make sure they include the Riverside Athletics handle whenever they tweet something, so we try and get the communication out to the community and all interested stakeholders as best we can, at least a starting point with that. Final forms is something that's pretty cool. We're going to this, we have like a little soft rollout this spring, and one of the main reasons for this platform is for compliance, emergency management, streamlining, communication. In a nutshell, what it is, it's a platform where we're able to, for athletics, minimize all paperwork for parents, so we can get physicals, emergency medical forms, everything that needs to be done online, and once you're in the database, it's done unless information changes. So, instead of having to fill out something for a fall sport or a spring sport, you know, the next winter sport, one time and it's done. Coaches can access all of the emergency medical information from any smart device. So, something happens, they obviously still want to carry it with them, but emergency is just another way to get the stuff in terms of compliance. Physicals, coaching certifications, anything else, it's all on here, and we can keep track of it through the athletic department once it gets uploaded, and we have record of that. And the nice thing about the final forms, what it does, is it sends out reminder emails, sends a reminder, "Hey, Coach, 30 days, you're about to expire." "Hey, Coach, 10 days, you're about to expire." "Hey, parent and student athlete, 30 days, your physical's gonna expire. Make sure you do something about it." And so, we're able to kind of streamline and, again, unify as well as comply with everything we need to comply with law-wise.
Does it have anything in there as far as reminding parents about pay-to-participate fees and things like that, does it?
Yes. The nice thing is we can actually then pull out specific groups or whole groups, and we can message as well. So, we can start now, once you've signed up for it during the database, we can get information. As simple as, like today, we had canceled JV baseball scrimmage. JV baseball team scrimmage canceled, practice from 3:00 to 5:00, and it's just immediate communication to everyone involved. So, but yes, that's where we can get information about all that stuff.
Nice.
And again, just a little bit more about it, just cut and paste a couple of things. You can look at it or go back to any center anybody wants to look at that stuff, and we'll read everything for you. One thing I think we're really proud of is booster president's meetings. We've had about four meetings with all booster presidents, and again, in order to unify, we're not, we're not taking away each individual booster group and what they're able to do, but again, the thought is to unify everyone, to get everyone on the same page, where we're not, you know, overlapping fundraiser, where we're not going to the same vendor multiple times. We're collaborating with ideas. The reason the Coca-Cola logo's up there is we've, we've all kind of collaborated with our Coke rep. We don't have a contract, it's expired at the moment, but what we've done is we've been able to, you know, power and, you know, numbers with purchasing. We've been able to get five new coolers from Coca-Cola for all our booster groups to utilize. A refrigerator, baseball team's gonna be utilizing just some, some different things, where, again, the power and numbers and unify, and that goes from bambooisters all the way down through lacrosse. So, that's been, been pretty nice, and it's really helping unify the department as well as stakeholders and a lot of the adults who, you know, has a vested interest in what's going on. So, that's been really good. We're proud of that. Paying referees, umpires, and officials. Arbiter Sports is where we do our scheduling, and that's kind of a universal thing in the state of Ohio. We have not utilized to this point, able to pay the officials online. We used to have to get them to go through, fill out a voucher, social security number, whole thing, then we had submit the payroll, they had to wait. There was rumor out there because of that, we maybe missed out on some of the better officials at times, being able to get them here, because they didn't feel like waiting for payment or whatever else. This now can be paid instantaneously. All they do is fill out a record that they were here, or I concede that they were here. We go in, click a button, submit for payment, and it's good to go. So, that's something, again, nothing crazy, but this is something that helps streamline things and make things more efficient. Minimizing money spent on tickets, we get 3,500 tickets from a group called Huddle Tickets. A lot of schools in the area use them. You may have seen them, they've got the coupons on the back, but, so they're free tickets as long as, you know, we communicate with them in timely fashion, and obviously, we're okay with the vendors on there with the coupons. So, we definitely have taken advantage of that. We're able to save already $500 this year on purchasing the Riverside tickets because we're using these first. So, just something that we're taking advantage of and keeping that relationship up with them. Strength and speed for all athletes. We went through the athletic department, an app called Team Builder. It's also a platform, the football team's been using it, so is the PE department under Coach Schussler. Well, we went ahead and we hooked up the entire athletic department, all coaches, we communicated with them. Coach Schussler has been training any coach that wants to, and all it is, is you go into that weight room, if you're not familiar as a coach with maybe a lot of what you're doing and developing workouts and don't have time, there are predetermined workouts for in-season, out-of-season for all sports and all athletes. So, again, it's just another avenue to assist our coaches in training their players. And this is a picture, and the reason that one's up there is we have three teams working out in that beautiful facility at one time, getting work in and doing what needs to be done. So, again, it's worked well for the football program and the PE department, so now we've tried to advance it to all our coaches, and again, just give them another opportunity to feel more comfortable and to make their jobs easier and more efficient in training their athletes, because again, this is extremely important. You know, you go all the way down to the Pee-wee leagues, usually the bigger ones, the faster ones, the stronger ones, damage, no different at our level. And then even more importantly, injury prevention from your common injuries to concussions. The more, the stronger your neck and shoulders are, you minimize, you know, whiplash here in the neck, minimizes concussion risk, so that's something that we're really taking very seriously in the department, is making sure we give the opportunity for all athletes to be able to be trained.
How's the equipment holding up?
Tremendous. Yeah, it's really, really good. Thank you. Well, in the works, a couple of things in the works, and I'll be done. Sticking on the training our student athletes. Lake Health sent something out about a month ago. We're there starting to pilot a program where they're able to send a few of their certified trainers, athletic trainers, and not necessarily just taping and whatnot or diagnosing injuries and rehab, but literally for strength training, strength and speed training. And so, we took them up. Coach Schussler and I have met with them twice. Ironically, another meeting was this afternoon, and we're gonna try and pilot a program with them, for them coming out for a couple hours a day after school. The objective would be, is to also, again, help those coaches who are not 100% confident and familiar down in the weight room, giving them certified trainers to kind of take charge. So, we would have maybe a two- to three-hour block Monday through Friday, where, let's say, we have the soccer programs in there first, then it's track and cross-country, and then football would finish, and then we have volleyball, and then you have lacrosse, and we're still working out the logistics, but we send them down there, the coaches will kind of come help learn, but then these trainers will kind of take charge. They would develop the programs, they would develop the workouts, they would keep tabs on our kids. Football's probably gonna pilot it because it's something that they are charging for, so we're looking for the booster groups to be able to pick up the slack for this, and football's already committed, the Gridiron Club's already committed X amount, and because it just is what it is, we're somewhat familiar with volleyball, so we kind of want to see what they can bring to the table. Want to see what they're bringing is legit and if it's something we want to move forward. But so, we're gonna pilot it part of April through May, through the end of school year, and then the summertime, and then we'll go from there. And it's important to note that even like our volleyball team has already outsourced their training. Ally Schultz hired Elite last year to come in and train her girls, because she knows the importance of strength and conditioning for her sport, and she wants to take it to the next level, state level. Well, this would hopefully maybe unify everything, and they wouldn't have to do that. So, that's what we've got in the works with Lake Health. Huddle, this is, it's not huddle tickets, it's a different kind of huddle. Again, there are three teams already in our athletic department that utilize this, football being a big one, and it's able for film breakdown, for recruiting, for talking with your athletes just about how to get better, and technique, form, everything else. Met with a huddle representative last week, and there's a way to get a major discount with the athletic department, so again, you can be going to boosters with that. And he's able, they even talk about bringing a camera mounted in the field house, and cameras goes by motion, so they can take practices, they can do whatever needs to be done, we can utilize. And then one of the big things is recruiting. It's a recruiting tool, and we use a lot with football, sending out game film and communicating with colleges for our kids, so now everyone will have access to that.
It's a great tool.
Isn't it? I mean, it's, it is.
Down the distance, you can play over video over and over, then you can slow it down, speed it up.
Right. Yeah, so it's great. So, we figured, again, let's get everyone on and utilizing it. Lastly, here's something we're working on, this is probably the last thing, and I realize that time with rescheduling spring events is now hit me square in the jaw, so with the weather and the fields, and, but we're looking at athletic handbooks going. Parent and the student athlete athletic handbook, then a coach's handbook, where you come here, it's Riverside Athletics, here's the expectation. For student athlete, for a parent, here's what we expect of you, here's our high expectations. Coaches, here's what we expect of you, not only for, you know, getting all your forms in, your certifications and licensures, but how you handle the press media, what we expect, you know, how you handle your athletes, how you communicate with the parents, things like that. So, that's something that's a little bit further down, but already, we've already got it started. But to do it right, it may be a little while, yeah.
How's the transportation working out and taking teams after school? I know some other districts are struggling getting them out there. I haven't heard anything from my office at all.
I mean, we're, we're slow right now, so, and cancellations, so never really, if things speed up.
The spring is, the spring is a busy time for.
Yeah, but I think it's really started is lacrosse and baseball right now. I mean, it's about 10 teams, and so, I mean, I do lacrosse now, so, it's a little right now, so we're good.
No, yeah, Chris, please, you've done a pretty good job, you know? You really have, so.
Why ask? It's typically, I'll, I'll hear, I'll get some calls, and I haven't, don't call me, please. Usually, at this time of year, I do get some calls about that, and I haven't received one, so.
Gotcha. Good. That's it. That's it. Just a quick update for everybody and bring up to speed. Any questions?
We've been having an awesome year for our sports.
Yeah, kids, those coaches have been doing a great job, I mean, it's, it's really, it's really come together. I mean, we, hopefully our spring does the same. Incidentally, while we're talking, you know, about the sports and whatnot, we had our first girls lacrosse game with our new field, the line's painted and, you know, appropriately on there, so we had those done this, on Sunday, we had some professional come in and do it for us, so, or maintenance departments who touch it up, they can, but we used the yellow to try and kind of match it up with the other soccer lines, and Coach Modarelli was, was pretty happy, I talked to him after it was done, so he was pleased with that, so we're moving, we're moving along.
It's good stuff.
It's good, it's good stuff. I would like to also point out that at the high school level, we're doing amazing things, but also at the junior high, junior highs level, we're doing great things. Seventh and eighth grade, girls, both teams-
Seventh grade girls and seventh grade boys both had undefeated basketball seasons-
Undefeated basketball season and one in the tournament.
Right.
So we're doing great things, and this is mainly because passing these prior levies, getting more kid, more of our students out to participate in sports, and it's only gonna help when they get up there into high school level, so congratulations and thank you for everything that you're doing.
That is one of the biggest benefits for our program, and we're-
Yes.
We're forced to increase the paid participation, participation numbers decreased, and now that we have it more manageable, in fact, it's better than a lot of districts that neighbor us, that there are more kids going out and participating.
There's no question, and, and I think a huge residual effect is keeping them here.
Yes.
Keeping our great kids and families here and providing services, so yeah, it's been, it's been awesome, so, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
That concludes our report.
You have on here TDA.
Oh, TDA, so you are, you're back to it.
Hi, Emily, Dana's from TDA and Scott Clifford. We just wanted to give a quick update. I believe you have a schedule that was passed out, if not, I have extra copies here. Do you have one?
You might want to pass it out.
Oh, wait, no problem.
It's a schedule that was emailed to us, the paper was gonna write.
It's a large one. So, oh, sorry, there's one over there, it's small. So just a quick update, what we did was put together a full campaign schedule just leading up to the November 5 campaign, and this is for phase two, and just to give the board an update on where we are at and what we've been working on since the beginning of this year.
Thank you.
So we had a kickoff meeting in January, in February, the validation of the high school and fieldhouse took place, and then in, just recently, on the 5th of March, we got together with the core committee and presented the findings of the validation and the assessment, the previous assessment that had taken place. So during that time, we spoke with the group about how to kind of further engage throughout that, or really our information gathering phase that we're currently in right now, and talked about conducting an observation day where our team would come out to the high school, and really it provides us, spend a day in the high school, where we're looking at site circulation, pickup drop off, operations of the overall school, traffic within the school. It gives us a better sense of just overall culture, so we were able to coordinate that on March 15th, which was very helpful for the team again, and just having a basic understanding of, of current state to help kind of inform the process as we move forward. So that's been a crucial part of our information gathering phase throughout March. And then as part of our research phase as well, the team is currently conducting building capacity studies and educational adequacy studies. That'll be completed at the end of March, and then we'll be looking at the beginning of April to set up another review meeting with the core team to present out those findings, and then, you know, again, further the process as, as part of this initial planning phase. So that'll, as I mentioned, because spring break is next week, so we'll, we'll send out an email and check availability to get that on the schedule in early April. And then what came out of our review meeting for the validations was, we had mentioned this in our interview, but the interest in setting up an educational visioning session to bring everyone together. So I've been working very closely with Melissa. We did establish a date on April 4th, Thursday, April 4th, to schedule that educational visioning session, and that'll invite a variety of different stakeholders to come and provide input, help vet priorities, and a real all-day interactive session. So another key, key part of the process is, again, this informational gathering session that we're, or period that we're currently in. So we're really excited to get that on the books and, and again, gather that information to support the planning process as we move forward. So those are some of the key, I think, just milestones in looking at the month ahead, and then for the board meeting on the 29th, we'll come and present the findings from that overall research phase, and then the educational visioning report, which will provide a hard copy to be able to share the output from that session. But you do have the, I don't want to take up too much time, but you do have the full schedule that leads up to this, along with steps that are involved, as well as deliverables and expected presentations that will, will come in. But we'll be attending every board meeting just to share updates with you and, and address and answer any questions.
So how does the schedule change if we look at this and say, you know, November is too soon, we want to look at next May? How does that affect the schedule?
Absolutely, no problem. We will coordinate as usual. The steps are still gonna, some process, or some phases will just elongate, but it can absolutely be customized. That's what we're working towards right now, but if that changes anywhere throughout the process, we'll revise.
Thank you.
Very good.
The only thing to remember is 2020 is an electoral, presidential election year, so there's only the March primary, not the typical February, May.
So yeah, I want to mention that you're a, you're a Riverside grad, so you're familiar with all of the, yeah, activities that were going on the other day.
Yeah, I got, I got to be here last week, and I really kind of enjoyed all the nostalgia of being around here.
Did you eat lunch?
No.
Just running down the hall.
Have you seen any of your old teachers?
A few, sadly, they didn't recommend.
It's probably the beard.
And Emily's a resident tonight.
Yes, it's only 10 minutes away, and I will say, it was really neat to, to spend the day in the school. Everyone is extremely welcoming, you're invited into a classroom just by walking by, so it was really neat to get that sense of just community, welcomeness, and, and seeing the kids. I think one of my takeaways was, I said, you know, all the students are so friendly and kind to one another, even in the hallways, you know, sometimes you may see some pushing around, but I mean, everyone was very cordial and it was refreshing to see.
Your comment was, the parking lot flow is much better than what it was when you-
Oh, yeah. We only had like the one entrance when I was here, it was crazy.
It's made a big difference.
Yes. It was very helpful. I'm still looking for a day before. Day before, yes, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great session. So more to come on that, I'm working with Melissa on the location, and then invitations as well.
Anybody got questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that finishes special. All right, that takes us to old business, if anyone has anything. How about new business? All right, that then takes us to Board of Education Committee and liaison reports. First thing is the superintendent's business advisory, there was a meeting, I guess that was last week, right? Early in the morning? Oh, no, I couldn't go, it's in the morning.
The next one, I think, I think the next one is going to be the projects.
Oh, senior project?
We had a real large number, Mr. Lietz has sent me that number, it was around 188 shots?
200, something like that.
And that's May 29th, are they gonna do it in the fieldhouse again? Because it was-
It's really crowded.
Acted.
After, there's more, every year it's more.
Oh, you're right, 188, turned in projects.
I think we started off with like 50, and then next year it was like 90, next year it just keeps kind of going on.
It's a lot of fun to go to, it's really neat.
Let me just echo that, so my daughter graduated last year, and then when I was fore president as well, I got to go, it's truly fascinating. It's not only interesting to see what the, what the students have pursued, it's also interesting to see what, what different things are in our community, right? You just, you don't think of all the things that come together to make, you know, Lake County work, or even, you know, going into Kyle County or whatever, but it's, there's so many different facets and interesting things, it just, it's, every, every stop is fascinating.
Well, I take my, I bring my kids with me to it every year, my three, and it's really interesting to actually have the kids talk to the students too, and some of these students that go to this thinking like, oh, I absolutely want to be this when I grow up, right? And they go, oh my gosh, after two weeks, I don't want to do this at all. So it's just, it's a really interesting conversation though, to hear the kids have with younger students, it's a neat, I love that.
That'll value in what they might want to do, so there's also value in finding out that you don't want to-
For sure, it is.
Without a doubt.
It's a great, it's a great opportunity.
That is key.
So May 29th, yeah, definitely.
That is key.
Go to that for sure if you can, May 29th at 7:00 PM, right?
20th.
Right, 29th at 7:00, is what I have written down.
I don't know the time, but, yeah, it was somewhere. I get that out too from the P.
Okay, that takes us curriculum and programming and booster organizations.
Okay, since the last meeting, we have not had a meeting, but that being said, Thursday, we have both meetings.
There you go, 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM and 5:30, I believe, for the boosters.
AM?
PM. I think.
Coach Boris, that reminds me too, is if possible, that you guys include Mr. Miley on the president booster meetings you guys do? Because he does, he attends the meetings with our PTA, with all the parent booster groups in our building, so being able to attend the athletic ones would be great too.
Got it.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
I like giving Jack action meetings.
Yes.
I forgot him already.
Wow, there's that. Anything else, Mr. Miley?
No, I'm good.
All right, finance, audit, personnel, strategic plan, Mrs. Grassley.
Finance, audit, and personnel, we have not had a meeting since the last one. I would anticipate we'll have one relatively shortly to review forecast information.
We had, we had just had one previous, a month and a half ago, so, and the strategic
plan, I have no update because I haven't heard anything about it, so.
You're kind of busy.
Anything else, Mrs. Grassley?
No.
All right, buildings and grounds, alumni.
So I'll just start with alumni, I was out of town, so I was not able to attend that meeting, so I'll have a report for you next week, or next month. With regard to buildings and grounds, we actually have met a couple times, we met in person, and, and we like to keep tabs on what's going on with the buildings, so we had a debrief from, from Chris regarding what was going on. Obviously, it's been superseded by subsequent reports, and we all heard what's going on, all the good things going on at Parkview and, and Parkside and Riverview. The, a couple other things, Mr. Miley and I caught up with, with Mr. Wainer, and we took a tour of the legacy elementary buildings, Buckeye and Melridge, as well as Lamuth, and we just wanted to get out and see what was going on, and based on our tour, where Mr. Wainer is gonna develop a plan to perhaps increase the amount of custodial support that we have in those buildings. Things are getting done, but they're, they're not quite to the standard frankly is, is what's happening here at the high school, or even at Lamuth, which we also toured, so we're gonna see if we can't beef that up a little bit. But it was a, you know, people are working hard and trying to get it done, but we just may need more support in those, in those schools.
Can I ask a question about Buckeye and Melridge? Are we really at as far as the ideas of the best rules or trying to secure those buildings a little more?
That's, that was next.
They coming up next?
So that's, I'm gonna turn it forward to, to Mr. Wainer as well, just to amplify some of the things I've said, but we did talk about the, the, we saw some drawings of potential derivations of putting in the, you know, the extra security, so that, that's good, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Wainer, and then we also, I don't know if you, Mr. Wainer, do you also have an update on the, on the stands for the band?
Yeah, a couple of things, tomorrow at 1 o'clock with Mr. Kalis, we're meeting with the company from CT to go over what we're thinking about for the band bleachers, and we're also meeting with Jeff Merritt to come in for the construction part of things, and then hopefully after tomorrow's meeting, we agree on the bleachers, I can get them ordered, which is the, keeping me up at night whenever, who asks for keeps me up at night.
Yep.
Right now, man bleachers.
He gets it too.
Okay, so we get those ordered, I'll feel a lot better about it. We also met with CT, and we're talking to them about our vestibules, and this morning, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Kalis.
You think?
I did get information this morning on air conditioning for the two elementaries, and I have that number for Mr. Kalis, whenever he's ready to see it, it just came in today. We took a tour of Hale Road with an outside group, and we're gonna go back again Friday with a, with a group to take them on a tour of Hale Road, and we also went through Haddon.
I'm sorry, is, is this group that you're doing on Friday, is that a separate group, or is it another group from the same organization?
Basically, he's, a lot of what was said already, he's gone halfway into my super territory. He should have some representatives from the Lake County ESC walk through, was it March 8th?
March 8th, coming back this Friday.
Coming back this Friday to take a look, to see if there's any use for the space.
They need to step on you.
No, no, sorry. These are band bleachers too, we did get an estimate that of what it would be if the company went in itself and, and created everything for us. We think we can do some of it ourselves. There's a difference between the type of bleachers that they first quoted us, putting footers in and building out of the ground, and we're thinking that we might be able to put a concrete pad and put one, it just sits on it. Sees air for maintenance that way, but we're gonna compare the price. One's less expensive than the other, we might just go with the one that's less expensive.
Mr. Wainer, where are the bleachers from, that, that the students took down?
We have them at Concord, and they were, we had to cut them, to remove them, to pull them out of there.
You're at Dominion's building, the Concord.
Correct. Then we have them outside, wrapped up and stored, and I also have all-
They're not usable anymore? I mean-
Well, to have somebody come in and put them together, that's gonna be a pretty big expense, but it's something that we should look at from a smaller standpoint of putting together for another group for the baseball fields or whatever, that's something that probably could happen.
Are those original too, or no?
Those are, as far as I know, original band bleachers.
We dedicated the stadium back in '02.
Well, how much would new bleachers cost? What's the-
We don't have a price on that yet, we're still looking at the exact replica of what was up for the band bleachers, plus a little extra space for growth in the band, but we do have those dimensions. And that's something tomorrow that we're gonna-
Right now, the estimate we received through, an estimate through CT Consultants, and this is very preliminary, it was $120,000 for the concrete pad, the stands, everything, making a access road to get to the, the construction, and we're not, we're not at that point yet. We, we think we can do a lot of that work ourselves. We need the design, but we think we can do some of it on our own.
So going for 2019, what is concession, are they gonna be where they were now, or?
No, they're gonna be-
They're gonna be in the stands.
They're, the, no, they will be done hopefully by that time, but if you look at the stadium, had to see it, the picture in the back, but they run off of the 100 meter, it's kind of up on that hill.
I know you did this last meeting, if you could just turn the camera to the picture on the, on the wall, and it's, I think where Mr. Kalis is talking is, he's gonna point it out, so.
You went through this last meeting.
It's in this vicinity here. We have to move a fence, put in a pad, and, and put the stands, we also have the, have the ability for the students to get out of the stands, so the stands up, we'll be there, we'll have some rows of egress, and then there'll be either some steps or a ramp, a smaller concrete pad to the, across the track into the field.
Mr. Borst, does this affect the football at all, putting them there?
No, no. Actually, it enhances some of the use that we have out of that field and that desection, because we used to have the stands in that turfed area behind the back of the end zone there. And I do know that we do have quite a bit of obstruction going on, especially with the lineman and Coach Schussler, but that's not the only reason. The other reason was, we wanted to be able to have parents that are on the track team actually be able to watch their kids run, because when those stands were in the original spot at desection, you'd lose them behind there, you can't, you couldn't see the kids run, which caused a problem. I think this is a solution that I think everyone will be happy with, especially in the last couple of years when we put the rented stands in the other end by the concession, it really obstructs the view of anyone that stands, used to stand around the fence, I was one of them, you can't really see what's going on, it just doesn't look-
That's my spot.
I have both first spots.
Getting back to that, again, I'm sorry, Mr. Borst, I should ask you earlier, regarding the football and track being that, that's wide open now, have we been able to entertain any type of playoffs or conference meets at our new facility yet? Well, with football and track specifically, yes, nothing with track yet, because we've, again, first, I guess the best way to put it is we're just kind of all getting our feet wet and figuring out what we can with, you know, the track program, track coaches and whatnot, but there is more, we're hosting JV meet for the first time this year, different things, we get some invitationals going, and so we're trying to be aggressive with that. Yes, football wise, we applied for a playoff spot this year to host a state playoff game. Unfortunately, that often depends on geography of the two teams playing, so if we don't have two teams that, this is kind of a central location for both, we wouldn't get selected. We will continue to apply for those in state. We did host girls soccer playoff matches here as well, not just our own, but I mean, an independent one, Madison, NCL, I believe, so we, we're putting in for all those to showcase our beautiful facilities, so we're trying. Thank you.
It is geography was the issue too, there's nothing north of us, right? And anything, you know, Ashtabula teams are to the east, but there's not a counterpart really west of us from, like, we'll play teams like Ashtabula-
No, it's true.
They're larger schools, there's some that are south.
And if you put, Mayfield applies like they do, Metter applies like they do- and also now we're one of those three, you know, vying for a spot. So it has to be a perfect storm, but we're gonna keep trying, we definitely want them here.
Awesome.
Mr. Grassi, in your report, are you going to cover the vestibules?
I can, I don't have them, but I can.
Okay, I, then I'll see that to Mr. Kalis.
Still everything goes from him?
I'm telling my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. All right, policy and legislative, Mr. Jeffries?
Under policy, I have nothing new.
It provides in my report too.
In your report too?
First, we're briefly with the Miola, Rob.
Okay, so we will set up a meeting after that? I contacted, under the legislative, I contacted OSBA, and there was nothing new really going on legislatively. But there was a state conference today in Columbus, where a lot of superintendents and school board members met, and they were discussing the school funding, and there might be something new coming down the bike regarding school funding. Hopefully, it'll be a relief for the community members, and be more, less money that they have to pay out. Did you hear of anything?
He hasn't given a little bit of update on the state budget in my report, and what the next steps are.
That is all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, well then, Mr. Kalis, it's good to see you.
Okay, I'm gonna do the calendar last. In talking to the construction superintendent, demolition of Madison should occur during the month of July, also the cleanup. Parking lot will not be completed, nor will there be drop-off loops anywhere at the site, at Madison. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is I wanna make sure that we get the word out to the parents over at Madison, that we would really encourage them to put their kids on the bus, because there's not gonna be a parking lot or a loop in there.
When do they anticipate that coming out?
Probably around October is the target date. Okay, and that was no change, that was always in the works, that there's no way they can demolish the building and abate it, demolish it, and then have that all cleared by August and ready to roll. So I've talked to Mrs. Shanty about it, she's gonna get some notices out to the parents just to make sure that they understand that we prefer that they put their kids on the buses. Also, we also touched on the fact that we had ESC representatives toward Haddon and Madison, or Haddon and Hale Road on March 8th. They're looking for possible instructional space for alternative school, possibly the ISTEM school. ISTEM, once we get notice, they have 60 days to let us know whether or not they're interested. We'll work with them as well, they're not, you know, they can wave a 60-day notice, but we have to wait 60 days for them to give us an answer on whether or not they're interested in the property. Currently, from what I understand, they're renting from Willoughby Eastlake to about $80,000 a year. I wanted to make sure that the board understood that. I told the ESC representative that there's no way that we would be interested in retaining the property only to rent it out, because we don't wanna be responsible, number one, of keeping the property when we told the public what we would get rid of them, and two, maintaining it, because, you know, they want us to rent it to them. So any type of deal that we would have with them would be to sell the property and do it that way. We also had another community member reach out and was asking about the existing two buildings. This is the same individual that looked at Leroy last spring, I think it was, Gary?
It may have been last summer, I think it was.
And Mr. Placco did contact him back and updated him on that. We also talked about the visioning committee, that's gonna be on April 4th. Right now, we have a list of many people, many stakeholders, including employees, community members, business people, representatives of political representatives, and we're trying to get as many people as we can to get together to try to find out what kind of building we may want or facility for this next phase.
Do you have a sense of what time it's gonna be, and where?
We, we're looking at the media center, I think, but we're not sure on that yet. Depends on how many people are gonna commit to it, and it's all they, isn't it?
Seven, Melissa's thinking 7:30 to 2:00.
Yeah, it's gonna be all they.
And then alternate of location we're looking into is the history center, right?
They're trying to align that so students could attend. We normally get representatives of high school students, middle school students, and others, so he wanted to align it a little bit.
I also wanted to congratulate Raj Vagula, I think his correct pronunciation. He not only won the Lake County spelling bee, he went on and competed at Kirtland's Town Hall, and he went to Tri-County, there were three individuals there, and after 62 rounds, he came in second. Had he won that, he would've gone to Washington DC, but we wanted to congratulate him for not only winning Lake County, but also coming in second at the Tri-County. Want to add anything?
No, he was down to the final two for like last hour and a half, and the other student just, I would've been out in the fourth round. Yeah, it was pretty intense, it was long.
The other thing too, I wanted to mention is, the senior citizen appreciation day was really well attended. I think, I mean, from what I remember, I think it's the largest crowd I think we've ever had. And the production of newsies, cast recruited, great job. And also the kids from the fruits class, and Mrs. Snug, who provided the dinner to our senior citizens. It was really nice, as always, the ground production was well done.
Do you want to talk about the vestibules?
Oh yeah, also the vestibules. So we did receive some estimates back on each of the buildings. I think they're more detailed than what they need to be. Again, we're looking at trying to drive the cost down, but just to give the board an idea of what we're looking at is, just putting, building a glass vestibule inside of Buckeye, one where you have to go to the, once you're inside the building, you go to the glass to check in with the secretary, and you aren't able to get into the body of the building because there'll be a set of glass doors there. Again, that would probably be level three glass as well, and also glass on the other side as well. Now, they gave us back an estimate that included moving some walls around. There needs to be a little bit of movement, a little construction, but not to the tune of what we saw. So the cost of that was really too high. So we're looking at being more reasonable than what we want to do over there. It's quite simple, really, to put the two glass. Melridge is a little bit different, it's no easy way with the way that's designed and laid out. But while we went over there, there was, we had an idea of converting one of the first classrooms into an office area, which would allow somebody to come into the building, not through the main doors. And between where the main doors are, there's a staircase that goes upstairs, it would be the first classroom there, to the right of those doors, which would allow somebody to walk in, a visitor, check in with this new area, and then go through another set of doors to get into the building.
So with the way that we've got the new redistricting set up, would you be able to lose that classroom and be okay still?
I believe we can, I believe we can. We're looking at, the other office area could be for meetings and some intern offices. Yeah, again, I think there's a lot to be said for some of the work that our maintenance can do over contracting out. So we're working on that now, looking at what we can do. All right, so I have three sets of calendars here, let me have one, two. I'm talking with Icon, they're a little behind in the schedule, and we were talking about what could be a possible start date, and it can be anywhere between the end of August or the first day after Labor Day. What you're looking at represents moving some professional development days and a couple days of flexibility in terms of when we start and when we end. Everything in the middle is relatively the same. If you look at draft number one, the three blue sections in August would be teacher in service and teacher workdays for us, and the kids would start on the 29th and 30th. They would have September 2nd off, and if you look throughout again, if you go to November, you're gonna see that on the 5th, that day would not be just a day off for everyone, because Election Day, instead we would have the teachers come in, because the teachers have a certain obligation of days they have to be here. November's, throughout Thanksgiving, would remain the same. Christmas would remain the same, that winter break. As you can see, there's some question about taking off some days at the end of it, but the way the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of January falls, we didn't wanna have the kids come back on Friday, the 3rd. We would think that had we done that, that wouldn't have looked very reasonable. So the 17th would be another professional development day. The 20th, the kids would have off, for Markland's King Day. February, the 17th would be President's Day. Again, the end of March would be, the last full week of March would be our spring break. April, you'd have Good Friday off, which would be the 10th, and then Holy Monday, Easter Monday, the 13th. And the students would be done on June the 5th, and then we would have two professional development days. One would be a workday as well, on the 8th and 9th. So with this schedule, this calendar, kids would start on the 29th, and they would get out on the 5th. The only problem is, a lot of our professional development days would be stacked in the beginning of the year and also at the end. We'd have two professional developments in between. Now, I value professional development, but I don't think it's gonna be very valuable if we're doing some professional development kinda at the end of the year, because you have three months of losing whatever it is that we're going out. If you go to the second draft, we'd have two days. The 27th and 28th would be teacher report days. Students, again, would start on the 29th. And the calendar kinda remains the same, but we have more professional development in the course of the year. And the students would get out on Tuesday, the 9th, and teachers would be done on their workday on June 10th, a day later. All the rest remain the same. The reason why it's pushed back a little bit farther is the fact that we have more professional development days in the body of this calendar, which would mean that the students aren't going to those days, and we have to tack them on at the end of the year. Draft three, we have three days, 28th, 29th, and 30th. This is the calendar, which would have the kids go back on the 3rd, which is the first day after Labor Day, like it used to be when we were kids. And again, the days, professional development days would be two, really in the body of the calendar, and there'd be two days at the end of the year, on June 10th and 11th, and the students would be required to be here into the second week of June on the 9th.
Based on where the buildings go online, like how soon do we have to vote on a calendar? How soon do we have to vote on a calendar? Like, how long can we prolong the voting on a calendar?
You can look at these, I mean, I can bring to the board in April. I do have to, contractually speaking, I have to share it with the union as well. Either one of these three, I think, would work. It's just, you know, professional development days is one thing we need to consider, and also, you know, how late do we wanna go into June? And it'll only be for one year or two, I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be set in stone.
Right.
But these are, we could tweak some things, but these are three are, we could represent of what we think we can do, and it'll work. I mean, the Icon would like to have a start after Labor Day, but they also said that, you know, we're the owner and we could set it up for the 29th. They just wanna make sure they have occupancy license or certificates. And that, it doesn't only include one, it includes things like plumbing, it also includes fire. You know, we just need to have all these entities come through and make sure that the building is up and running and ready for the kids at the end.
So which calendar do you prefer?
I can go with any one of the three. I would prefer starting on the 29th, if we can, but, you know, if they're not 100% ready on the 29th, then I'll have wished we would've taken the 3rd.
You're talking about two days, though.
Why the 29th?
Just because, a couple of the original calendars we had, the kids were getting out by the third week of June, and I think that's too late. A lot of other schools are already starting two or three weeks before us. We'll have a couple of ballgames already under our belt. Auburn kids are gonna have to start when Auburn's ready, not when they're ready. I don't want them to start after Labor Day. They have certificates they have to get, and they have to have a certain number of contact hours. So my suggestion would be, no matter what calendar we have, that we send our Auburn kids to Auburn in the middle of August. A lot of other districts are starting their year in the week of the 12th of August. So further we push back, I know, I don't, I don't agree with it, I think it's, I don't know why they do that. If you have air conditioning, okay, maybe, we don't.
It's so early.
We will, the two elementary schools, but...
Not here.
So the 29th gives us a couple of days. I don't wanna start them on a Friday where they're only coming in one day. Just kinda get your feet wet, and then we start the week on Tuesday, the 3rd of September.
Is that an holiday kindergarten, or are kindergarteners gonna start on the same day as everyone else?
No, they just start a few days.
Yeah, they start three days later.
Right, I didn't know if those were gonna be any different.
Same thing with preschool.
On the third calendar, Chuck, is there any reason why we can't move the 11th to the 27th of August?
Well, it's an option too, I mean, they can do that.
And then you got more front-end school year stuff going on?
Yeah.
And then...
Could be.
We had one where there were four days in a row. We took it out just because we thought it was just overloading those, all the days that the teachers didn't have that time.
The reason I like the 3rd, though, is because that does give Icon more time if it's a rush, and it also gives us more time if we're moving, depending on where the buildings are.
I think that no matter what time we give them, they'll take, that's the thing, you know. Be nice to be at, you know, our target date is August 1st, and we're pushing up, what do they say, three, four weeks right now?
Well, it's already bad enough that we can't even get in a driveway at a building, so... I just think that if something happens that we can't make the 29th, you're gonna scramble and tell everybody we're not doing it?
Hopefully, we'd know beforehand.
Well, even if it's a week, you're gonna still scramble and tell everybody after they set up their babysitting and everything else?
Yeah, well, we do that for calamity days, it's the night before. So it's just, I take a little bit of a black eye, because, you know, we weren't ready on the time that we said we would be. But, I mean, a reasonable person would think, you know, that sometimes these things happen. We're fortunate enough to have two good buildings, and, you know. It doesn't matter to me either way.
So it'd be safe. It'd be safe, number three, starting after Labor Day.
Would be, but again, it's, again, it's starting a lot later than everyone else around us. Again, we got the Auburn, we got, we got a couple of things going on. Kids are gonna be practicing here and everything else.
Well, Auburn and Lakeland kids, and probably even Erie kids are all gonna start before the rest of the kids, and those are the big kids, so they can handle that.
You know, we can potter and perhaps vote in April, but I guess my inclination would be the draft three, which is starting on September 3rd, just for the reasons that Mr. Miley kinda outlined. And I understand your points, but if you can live with any of them, then that seems to give us the most flexibility and safety margin of error, I guess.
Plus, the nice thing is, if, if the buildings are done, I'm sure we're gonna wanna have a kickoff. We can have those kickoffs on the, on those days.
Yeah, we were thinking...
28 or 29, depending.
Yeah, we were thinking of having them in an open house, having a combination of both. Because we're not gonna be able to give in, I don't think, any earlier than, we tell them the 3rd, I'm telling you, it'll be the 3rd. If you tell them the 29th, it'll be the 29th.
Well, if you're that sure, then good luck.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there, just to the point of, you know, what variables are out there? You know, I've asked many times if there are any issues with vendors and supplies and things like that, and, you know, we're over the bad weather, so that the air can go up. There doesn't seem to be any issue with vendors, but you just never know. So those are the dependencies I see. We don't see an issue with labor force or things like that. So more or less, we have a kind of a clean glide path, but, but, you know, it's, it does create a more margin of error going on the 3rd.
It would only be one year. It would only be one year.
Somebody here in the board's leaning towards having this start on 3rd?
I mean, I've already expressed this, so I don't know where Mr. Jerry's is.
I like version 1 better, but I don't care that deeply about it either way. I just like them ending on that Friday, the 5th, honestly. A little more than ending all the way into June 9th. But, I can go either way.
Like I said, I like the 3rd, draft number 3. The way that they're, we won't have any problems, you know, starting the 3rd. Also, if you start earlier, it's normally a lot hotter, so the kid would be in school in the early heat time. He might not have school because of the heat.
Didn't we go back to school on the 2nd one year recently?
Several years.
2nd of September?
No, on the 2nd of January, like after spring break.
I know, I would ask that, I don't know why we can't start on the 2nd.
Again, it's your choice.
Well, not, January 2nd and 3rd, you pick up the two days, that would still get you out the 5th on the 3rd calendar. So that's not a bad thing.
Well, the other thing I had asked Jim when he and I were talking about this the other day, too, is if we put spring break back the way it used to be and pick up a day instead of having that Easter Monday off, making spring break the way it used to be when it followed Easter.
Yeah, and you could, and you could do that to save a day.
You know, are there other creative ways we can...
And that's not that late, because we've had later spring breaks.
Right, yeah.
Over my career, so...
Oh, yeah.
A lot of schools are going, they, because parents didn't like it.
Well, I agree, but we're talking about just this year. I mean, that's, I totally agree that we had talked about always going last week in March, but I'm just saying, if we can pluck a few days here and there to get the kids...
Out on the 5th.
Right, do the start after Labor Day, but get them out still that first week of June, I'd be much happier with that.
Yeah, that's even a better thought.
It's good.
Especially knowing that it's just this year.
We have communicated to families already, and, I mean, personally, myself as well, that we are now doing spring break the 3rd week in March.
Right, but that's not a, we didn't vote on that. It's not a hard, I get that, because people...
Why would we have done that?
It's not a hard, fast rule.
Because that's what we moved to, towards district.
We did, but it's not something that was...
Yeah, but this is an exceptional year.
It is.
This is, we want grand openings of some nice castles.
Okay, so, people need to be understanding this year of that. I would just ask, maybe we can see how we can pluck a few days here and there and make it so we start at the 3rd, but still end on the, on the 5th. Whether it means alternate, changing spring break, or it means us going back on January 2nd.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, just looking at going back on January 2nd, I always, you know, when we were in school, had the two or four weeks coming back after that, it was a little, little groggy, I guess, is what I would say, trying to get back into the school swing of things, and having two days that week, I think, would help, plus the weekend right there would, would help, perhaps, put one in a better mindset.
To just go two days, you mean, and then have a weekend versus coming back at 5?
Yeah.
I agree.
So that might, you know...
Parents might actually be excited to send their kids back to school on January 2nd.
Isn't there a Christmas song about that?
Something to that effect.
Well, the national championship's on Monday anyhow, the 7th.
All right, we'll take a look at it again. And whatever we come up with, I'll send it to the board and get their opinion.
Because I agree, it would be optimal if they got out on the 5th. That would be kind of a nice way to bring out the year.
Thank you. Mr. Platko.
Okay, I wanted to give the state budget update. On March 15th, Governor Dewine introduced his new state budget proposal. The school funding formula basically stays the same, the same dollar allocation that we get now, without it increasing. That's actually kind of helps us, because it doesn't increase the charter school deductions and things like that. But what also, on top of that, he did put in additional funding for earmark for things like mental health counseling, wraparound services, mentoring, and after-school programs. Distribution is based on census poverty data, and per pupil dollar amounts range on a sliding scale from $20 a student to $250 per student in this year, 2020, and then from $25 a student to $300 a student in 2021. They had a little projection of what kind of, this is in addition to the formula, so it's not subject to any type of cap or guarantee or any type of reduction for state share index, all that funky stuff that happens with the state formula. This is totally separate of that, so there's nothing that affects this number other than our poverty census data. So Riverside, based on our enrollment, and we would get $47.66 per student in FY '20, that'd be $184,000. Comparing to other districts like Paintsville City, they get the maximum $250 per student, so they get $694,000. And that district, Lake Manner, is pretty comparable to us. They're $45.91, so a little bit less per student, but they have higher enrollment, obviously, so they're around $344,000. So, that's in the governor's proposal. It could change drastically by the time it gets, whenever the final budget's approved in the end of June this year. What happens next is it goes to the House. The House will have their budget proposal, and the Senate will have their budget proposal as we go through the process over the next few months. I know I mentioned previously, I went to that Cup Patterson, the two representatives, Cup and Patterson, are putting together a new state funding formula that was not included in anything in Dewine's proposal. I'm not sure if that's going to be what the House is going to propose going forward, or if they're going to go status quo for now and introduce a new formula in two years. That's yet to be seen. They have another, another meeting, some meetings coming up in the beginning of April to kind of go over where they're at with that. I'm hoping to try to attend one of them, but the one that's closest to us, I have a conflict that day, and a couple other conflicts the other days. I might have to drive to Northwest Ohio to their meeting over there on the 1st, but I'll wait and see if I can try to move some things around. And see, maybe not be on that. So, that's the first proposal, could change drastically, but it's good to monitor as we go on, and, you know, see what could be happening or could not be happening. Next up, I just wanted to go through a PowerPoint about the Lake County School Financing District. On tonight's agenda, we have the first resolution of necessity to put the renewal up on this November. This is the joint levy with the three other school districts. I'll kind of go through the details of that, just so we know, kind of refresh on what it is, and, because it's a little unique, because I think it's still the only school financing district in Ohio that I'm aware of. Recently, there's been some attempts at doing a safety one, or one for special education, and those were not, were not successful. The Lake County School Financing District's been around for minutes. I don't think this is working, because it's not on. There we go. So, levy purpose and background. So the resolution was adopted on February 6, 1990, that created the school financing district known as the Lake County Schools Financing District, for the purpose of levying taxes for the provision of the following specified educational programs and services by the school districts that are part of the district. That includes personnel, materials, supplies, and transportation for instruction in language arts, social studies, mathematics, finance and practical arts, health and physical education, and science and business education. I always think, I see 1990, I still think it's 10 years ago, but it's almost 30 years at this point.
Crazy.
The four districts that are involved, Madison Local School District, Paintsville City Local School District, Perry Local School District, and of course Riverside. If you ever wondered why Paintsville's called Paintsville City Local, because usually you're only a city or a local school district, that's because they were required to be a local school district to be in the financing district. So that's how they changed their name, you know, years ago, so they can be part of the financing district, and that's why it's a weird city local school district.
Interesting.
Passage, vote and passage history. The first attempt in August of 7th, 1990, was unsuccessful when it was first introduced, and then in November of 1990, it passed at 63.66%, and then was renewed again in '95, 2000, 2005, 2010, and 2015. Historically, it's passed a pretty good margin compared to other school levies. And it currently goes through tax year 2019, collection year 2020, as in, oh, you pay your property taxes one year after the taxing year, so collection on that would go through calendar year 2020 of the current levy that's in place. So how does Riverside use the funds? All the funds are accounted for in a separate fund, which is Fund 30. They're not included, the funds are included in our five-year forecast. Interestingly enough, the other three districts do not include them in their plan, in their five-year forecast. We treat them as operating funds, and that's what they're for, they're for instruction, so that's why we include them. And one of the other treasurer of the other district said, "We probably should be doing it that way, but the law requires general fund, and then we have the financing in there." I think it's important to have it in there, because it's really operating funds. It's not like something special, like a pre-PI levy or destruction levy. We use the funds just for teacher salaries only, for teachers that are on Riverside campus. Right now, they're funding about 32 teachers do that levy in the English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. We don't charge any of the benefits to that fund. We don't do the material supplies or transportation expenses. I mean, obviously, it's only limited funds, and keeping it simple, just doing the salaries to that fund, and that's kind of how we always handle it. So as I said before, right now, looking at the current tax rate, looking at tax year 2018, collection year 2019, this is what the millage is currently. The voting millage was 4.9 mils back in 1990, and as you know, as valuations go up, tax rates come down due to House Bill 920. So the residential tax rate is only 2.28 mil, technically it's 2.277721. So the cost right now for $100,000, home valued $100,000, is $69.76, and this reflects the 10% rollback that the state pays on the homeowners, pays for them, you know, and then the 2.5% owner occupied credit as well. For Class 2, commercial industrial, and Class 3, public utility, tangible, both of those collection rates are still at the 4.9. Public utility always stays at the full millage, but commercial has stayed there because of the valuations have not really increased much over the years. This is kind of a little bit harder to see, but it shows the different valuations over the last 10 years, Class 1 being residential, Class 2 being commercial, and Class 3 being public utility. Because everyone always says, well, you know, the levies, because of the power plant, but as you can see, a lot of, 75% of the valuation's made up by residential homeowners, and then public utilities is much smaller. But the history on here kind of shows, in the third set of numbers, the valuation, you see the devaluation from the power plant, 15%, tax year 17, 18% tax year, tax year 18. So those valuations have been dropping as the power plant's been kind of winding down and going towards a potential in the next couple of years. But we're waiting to hear more on what might happen with that. Some annual revenue history here, this is based on fiscal year, and you can see in 2009, we're getting about $2.7 million, and it's slowly been declining every year through 2018, and that's due to the variables of enrollment and valuations is how things have fallen over the past couple of years. So you see a 10-year change, we're down about 18% in revenue from where we were about 10 years ago on that. So the current allocation of how the funds are distributed, it's Class 1 and Class 2 revenues, your residential and commercial revenue is based on each district's enrollment. Rather than being distributed based on your evaluation, it's going on enrollment, so as enrollment changes among the four districts, the allocation kind of changes around. Class 3 is distributed based on 2/3 portion of the enrollment and 1/3 based on each evaluation. That was a change that was made years ago, just to kind of help Perry maintain some of the revenue from the power plant. With the renewal, we're looking at changing the allocation, which will be for tax year 2020, collection year 2021, and then each district will basically receive their proportionate share of the levy from, based on their valuation. Right now, for Riverside, if you looked at actual data from 2000, tax year 17, collection year 18, we would have received, based on the new formula, 2.7 million, where we actually received 2.1 million. You know, over the years, if we renewed the levies, we were getting tangible personal property reimbursements, we were getting some of the deregulation money that's now gone away. All that stuff has been phased out quickly over the last couple of years, so we were getting dollar for dollar a few years ago, but now is progressively going against us in our, you know, not in our favor, but against us, and that's why we need to have this allocation changed, that we've, the four districts have met, we've discussed that, we've all come to an agreement on, and we'll have a resolution for that at some point in the near future to change the allocation for the new levy. Doing this new allocation also protects Riverside, Paintsville, and Madison from the future Perry Power Plant devaluation, so it's basically the all in Perry's court on that. And then it also protects all the districts from disproportionate changes in enrollment, because of, everything's based on enrollments. If one district's going up and one's going down, their funds are shifting, and your funding's based on the other three districts' enrollment as well, so that's how things have kind of gotten a little out of whack over the last few years. So why doesn't Riverside just say, forget the financing district, let's go out for our own levy? Well, the first point is, the new levy would not receive the 10% rollback and the 2.5% owner occupied credit, those were only made in 2013 on all new levies. And then a result, and if you remember from the previous slides, if we have the lower tax level residential and 4.9 for commercial residential, well, if we pass a new levy to replace it, then all three classes would be on a level, would be on the same millage at that point. So basically, the shift of the taxes, you know, residential won't be saving anything, it's all going to be commercial and public utilities on a new levy. So right now, they're paying at a much higher rate, but they're, they're going to see all the savings and not the residential taxpayer. And also, if we wanted to replace the current revenue that we're receiving from the financing district, we'd have to pass a 2.03 mil levy, is what we've estimated. Now, remember, we're currently at 2.27, but because the new levy would not receive that 10% rollback and that 2.5% owner occupied credit, it would actually cost the residential taxpayer an extra dollar, $20,000 a year, to pass that lower millage levy to receive the same amount of revenue. Where if we kept it where it's at now and changed the allocation, we'd have that increase in revenue, as opposed to keeping the revenue as, as it is. So basically, it would increase the cost of the taxpayer, and we would lose out on all the increase we receive from the reallocation. And this, some frequently asked questions, usually this goes out with, when the levy goes out, but is this a renewal levy? Yes, it's a renewal levy, based on, you know, it's been around for 25, almost 30 years at this point. Will it increase taxes? No. The renewal will just keep at the same millage, we're currently at 2.28 mils? And will it be permanent or continuous? No, it'd be for a five-year period.
So, just a question, the legal basis for putting together the joint financing district was to take advantage overall of the valuation of the Perry New Glip Power Plant?
Right, I think that was a part of it.
Yeah. So if that does end up being mothballed, does that take away the legal basis for, for what we're doing?
No, because it's still, in a nutshell, it's still just the levy of the four school districts combined. You know, obviously, the point was to reallocate the funds from the power plant to that, but that's not, there's no legal behind that, other than the agreement amongst the four districts that had agreed to that, you know, the way that the funds are allocated. So basically, changing an allocation to based on valuations, we just have to have a new agreement that all four districts agree to, to do that change. That makes any sense.
Thank you.
Does that agreement have to be done before the levy, or can it be done anytime? I'm just curious.
I believe it can be done anytime.
Because we're not the collecting agent.
Right, the Lake County ESC is currently the collecting taxing district that collects the funds, and then they distribute it based on the agreement. We have a meeting on April 3rd with the four districts to kind of go over the new allocation, make sure we're on the same page, and make sure it's, you know, that the legal counsel squire patent bonds on this, that they put in writing exactly how we envision it to be going forward. Any other questions on that?
And good work.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves, and their topic comments are limited to three minutes. If anyone has anything? All right, moving along then, the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for a more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. First up is finance and audit.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit. Consent agenda is recommended by the Chair, item A2J.
Before we go into that, I would like to have a discussion on quitabilities. Can we have that before I say, remove?
Well, it's on the second, and then we'll discuss. Okay. If we want to separate anything.
Okay, I'll second it.
Second.
Mr. Miley did.
Under item C, diversity, we have Mr. Douglas here, he's been on our staff now for three years. What changes are, what have you noticed are...
He's done a lot of interactive work with our students. He's done some work with our staff. He's also helped us with conflict resolution and certain extreme cases where we could use his expertise with some parents. Mr. Douglas program that is different than some of the other programs that we have, there's a sustainability to his program. He's always available. He's always available to us. He, you know, in the past, I, I don't have the number of times, but we've been in, on the, we've been investigated a few times in terms of the Office of Civil Rights. We've always came out on the good side of that, but as in any other district, I mean, we could do some things better. He's also, he uses a sounding board. He gives us some direction in terms of what we need in our district and how to achieve diversity. He's also helping us plan a program for next year where we're going to get our athletic leagues, our athletic league and our teams together. There's a little bit of dissension amongst our teams playing other groups in our, in our league, and we're trying to put together a, a program where each district will host some training with our captains of our athletic teams, and we'll go, and each month, it'll be at a different place, doing team building, interacting with other players in, in the other schools in our, our league. He has like a lot of good ideas. In terms of the diversity piece, ever since he's been here, we haven't had, I don't believe, any major complaints in the Office of Civil Rights as well. He's just a great resource to have, and for the amount of, of money it costs to have him here, it's money well spent, in my book.
This is different than the, what we're paying for to do the culture playbook and what, right? Like, this is, is this wrapped up all in one thing?
Yeah, what, what you'll notice, I think the contract we had before was up through January. He's been working with us since January, but the, the contract he gave us is from March to the end of the year. So there's a couple of months in there that.
Ten thousand.
I'm sure it's covered in the contract, but it's, in terms of the dates, he's been, I know he's working with us because we had him in on a meeting earlier, I think it was in February.
So are the teachers, is our staff implementing any of the changes or ideals that he's coming up with?
They are. It's more about awareness too, and about our district being pretty eclectic. We have some really wealthy areas, and we also have some poverty areas. It only, it isn't only an issue of, of race, but it's also an issue of economics, and what we can do to try to catch kids that are falling through the cracks. A couple of years ago, when we were talking about gap closing, it was more or less what we believed is, is some kids that are just, they're not.
Thirty thousand.
They don't qualify for special education. They don't, they're, they're kids that aren't academically engaged. We want to be able to provide for them just an extra layer of, of awareness to, to their situations. I, I don't know, I mean, we, we've had, we've had some interaction also with those kids, role-playing, the Project Mosaic. He did some work at a PD, all-day PD out at Paradigm Center. It's very well received by our staff.
I was just going to say.
I don't know, am I missing anything?
No, it's, sometimes it's hard to put it in a, I mean, just, it's, it's, it's his ability to.
So I, my, my problem with this is, our, our growth isn't in our minority students and, and there's no growth in, in our minority staff that what we do have here at Riverside. I don't know if our teachers already have, understand what he's doing, I don't know why we have to keep him on staff. I mean, just because there's no policy saying that we have to, is that correct?
Right, but it's, it's one of those things where we want to get better, we can do better. Yeah, we may not have a, a diverse population really here, but we do have, I think, three percent African-American, I believe about ten percent Hispanic. We need to be able to work with all, all kinds of kids coming from all kinds of backgrounds. Includes white, white kids as well. There are some kids that are, are struggling with poverty. He's just, he's bringing up, like I said, it's a, it's like a level of awareness in, in how to help some of these kids not fall through the cracks.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you guys are seeing the benefits to it, and you find it to be important, I think it's important that we continue with him.
Melissa's been working with him in the PD aspect. I'm sure if she was here, she'd probably give a better explanation than I can. I, I wouldn't, I've worked with him as well, but in terms of developing the program, she's the one that really works.
I have to, I have to remind the board that we haven't been hiring. We've reduced, I don't want to give.
He can help us with that too, when the time comes. So if, you know, always reducing, when the time comes where we can start to try to diversify our staff as well, you know, so long as, you know, we're talking quality applicants and everything else, he can help us in that respect too.
Okay, good. Let's continue down. Item F, Diane Phillips. Here it says, we're going to give her another twenty-five days. What was her position before she was a consultant?
She was in, she was in the same position. We changed her responsibilities this year due to she no longer does functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans because we hired one of our teachers into that role.
And originally, she was hired by the, we hired.
And I was going to speak to that. So originally, I do believe this is the most cost-effective way to get the services that we, that we receive from Diane, because when she was with the ESC, her per diem rate was higher, and we were also paying benefits and the cost of doing business. So based on this, we went and now we contracted with her as an independent contractor, the overall per diem rate is, is less, and we are no longer paying the extras in terms of the benefits and the cost of doing business.
So does she, the services that she, I mean, when she was here full-time, her, her, what was her status there? She was, was she director of cer, of special?
She previously was the Director of Student Services when she was full-time.
Did she have a consultant working with her at the time?
She's more, she functions more as a district representative in IEP meetings for students that are placed outside the district, as well as students that are in our district, within our population of students who have social, emotional, and behavioral difficulties. And that has been her role. Because we changed her role a little bit, and she had less of the responsibility of the functional behavior assessments and, and developing behavior, behavior plans with teams, we, we really kind of guesstimated in terms of the number of days we were going to need her.
I think the original was two days a week.
It was seventy-five days total for the school year. However, our population amongst our social, emotional, behavioral students, it's doubled.
Right. We don't want to bring a resolution to the board where it's, it's more than what we need.
Right.
So we can rework a language of a, of a resolution saying, no more than this amount of days, and as long as it's approved by the board, we can.
I was trying to be conservative in that we thought seventy-five days was going to be enough to cover, but we fell short because of the increase in the number of students, you know, that had moved into the district, and then we have a number of students out of the district that we are still responsible for the implementation of their IEPs, even though they're open enrollment to another public school district. So a representative has to attend those meetings from Riverside.
What one of the other advantages of having Diane too, is because she worked in the, the district so long, she's developed relationships with a lot of these families.
And that's very critical, especially with the population of students that she worked with.
So can I ask just a general question, because I really don't have a problem with this, because I really don't want to interrupt service for the current year, but can we look at a different, maybe a different plan for next year for him? Like, just, so that we can have some options, like, if we're going to take the amount of money that she would get paid, for example, you need another hundred days, for example, you might be able to hire a full-time staff person.
But I guess that's what we did, Belinda. What we did was, we looked at, well, we changed her from an ESC employee to an independent contractor, that's exactly what we did. We looked at how are we going to get the same service, which is most cost-effective for the district. I, I don't believe that we would find, especially given, like, like we said, her experience and the relationships she has established with these families. I mean, there's something to be gained from that. I do believe this is really cost-effective for us. When you look at other supervisors in these types of positions, whether they're district employees or hired through an ESC, the overall cost is going to be a lot more.
So she's a supervisor.
But I don't know how much longer she's.
She is.
Okay.
Well, one thing we can ask, we can ask going, going forward is, for next year, looking at different options. One, hiring another person full-time for close to the same amount of money. Two, looking at PSI, see if they have anybody that can come in at a cheaper rate. And three, looking at what Diane's charging us per hour, because the one thing that we can do with Diane, in my opinion, is we can kind of control to a point how much she charges per day.
Right, but this is less than what we were paying as an ESC employee.
I understand that, I heard you.
It is less than what we would pay if she was a full-time supervisor hired by the district.
I understand that, but maybe some of these other options might be a cheaper rate and more time. So that's why we want you to look at.
We say this, just see what's more cost-effective.
That, that's great when you're looking at just dollars too, but again, we, we get some other value out of having Diane because she's got these relationships with the.
I mean, I guess when I contact with an individual, whether it be an agency or an individual, I'm always looking for what's the most cost-effective way to get the service that we need. I mean, honestly, if you want me to explore a five-day-a-week person, but I don't need a five-day-a-week person to do the responsibilities that she covers. I need somebody between seventy-five and a hundred days a year to do what, what she does in terms of the services she provides to the district.
But can a full-time person provide extra services to us? Other areas that we may need some more supervision or some more help? I mean, let's be honest, if we're paying somebody another twenty thousand dollars and getting a whole school year out of them, I find, I find that as.
I estimated it, I'm not.
I'm just guessing, I don't know.
Well, it would probably be double.
It would be double.
Because you have to pay.
Yeah.
We don't pay healthcare, we don't pay Medicare tax, we don't pay workers' comp type of thing. So if you have a full-time employee, if their salary at say is.
Sixty-nine. You start out, you say we got somebody at the bottom, starting at that level, sixty-nine.
My point is, the reason why that I'm questioning this, is it seem like a lot of districts do this, that they rehire administrators back, but they don't rehire teachers back. I mean, it should be fair both ways across the board.
We, yeah, we've offered before, we, there was a music teacher a few years back that was retired, we offered to have him back, but no, I mean, philosophically speaking, I know the, at least the boards that I've dealt with in, in this district have not been keen on retire-rehires either.
This is also someone that was very specialized.
That is what is to be gained from hiring, especially a supervisor or somebody into an administrative position that already has the experience, the knowledge base, knows the district, has worked with the families that she's worked with. There is something to be gained by that. She does have some flexibility in her schedule, I mean, and can adjust accordingly. It's very difficult to find a part-time person, quite honestly, with that type of experience, knowledge base, et cetera, who only wants to work two days a week, or two and a half days a week, what have you. And, and there are other districts, neighboring districts, that have supervisors that are retire-rehires, and I did double-check, and they're paying even more. So, you know, hiring them through the district directly. Again, I, I do feel that we have found a way to provide the service that's most cost-effective to the district.
So I think the point is, right now, you need the twenty-five more days, and that's what we're voting on. We're not voting on what we're doing next year. The vote is on twenty-five more days to get us through the end of the school year. But asking that if you can just at least come to the board with something to show us that it is the most cost-effective way for next year. Right? That's what everyone needs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go to the next one, Chromebooks. Can't help it.
We want to go home tonight.
We're supposed to be here, worried about the finances. Fifteen, fifteen hundred new Chromebooks. I believe it was in twenty sixteen, we had two batches, large batches of Chromebooks come, and we financed those, those two. And that was less than four years, and now we're looking at fifteen hundred. What is, are, are they that bad? Can you answer?
I got a little bit of research on this to make sure we had some information. And first, I want to clarify, we wrote the resolution the way it is to authorize the purchase of up to fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred Chromebooks at that cost. What it is, is we have, we're getting three quotes for different amounts of either one thousand, twelve hundred, or fifteen hundred Chromebooks. And we didn't, we only received one of the quotes in before today's board meeting, and actually, I just got the second one, maybe thirty minutes before the board meeting started. So we wrote it this way because we always have to have three quotes per board policy, and it's obvious good practice, but we didn't want to wait till the next board meeting on April twenty-ninth to ensure that we can order these in time to, you know, time for next school year. As far as where the amounts came from, we're looking at replacing the classes of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five, so that's about seven, eight hundred in those two classes there. We did purchase this, by historical, you know, as far as, we did purchase seven hundred and fifteen Chromebooks in two thousand fourteen, eleven hundred and forty Chromebooks in two thousand fifteen, and fourteen fifty-five in two thousand sixteen. Because we're one-to-one right now from the grades six through twelve, that's about twenty-five hundred or so. And in elementary level, we have class sets throughout the six elementary buildings. I'm not sure the exact count. Net Ops is working on that inventory, see where we're at, and making sure that for the elementary schools for next year, we have an appropriate number of Chromebooks across district-wide with the new buildings and the old buildings, and making sure that everything's equal across, curriculum across the district.
So the class of twenty twenty-five, are they using Chromebooks that were used already? Because class of twenty twenty-two are the current freshmen. So class of twenty twenty-five, you're talking about the kids that are going to be coming into.
Going into sixth grade, I believe, is.
No, it's twenty twenty-sixth, because that's my youngest. So it's, current sixth graders. But I mean, so I'm just curious, because at the current sixth graders, it would have been given Chromebooks this year already.
Yeah.
Were they given Chromebooks then that were used, like, that are really old already? That were replacing kids that would have just gotten new ones this year, assigned to them?
Not positive on that.
Okay.
So basically, we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility, because they're still working on those inventories in the elementary level. It was had that wrapped up this week, so we can confirm how many we truly need for next year. Because the, the life of a Chromebook is really only four to five years, you know, and they get, a lot of them get damaged. We do repair them in-house now compared to when we used to pay the insurance and ship them out, and that, you know, that was a disaster, it was live, it was gone for weeks. It was more costly than repairing the house, and sometimes they're not repairable, even when we had the insurance, we used to get notices all the time that they can't repair it. So looking at replacing two classes and possibly a third class, but I'm not sure what that is, I didn't have that information. I know Melissa was working on, on the final counts. So that's why we wrote in the resolution the way it is, and actually, we got that second quote that came in about thirty minutes before the board meeting actually came in lower than the original quote. But I didn't want to give out names just because we're waiting on other quotes, you never know who could be watching and that. So that's really why we wrote the way it is, and we were looking at just making sure everyone has the working technology and going forward and making sure that we continue our program, moving one-to-one from grade sixty to twelve.
But this is all just what we've been talking about every year. This is when we replace, this is nothing.
And we set aside about two hundred and fifty thousand in PI each year for Chromebooks and replacements. And even last year, you know, we bought nine hundred to replace two classes. We had two hundred extras that went to teachers and for repairs and replaced the ones that were.
Right, this is nothing now. So what we've been doing.
And we've done a really good job, I think, with the Chromebooks. I think my, my senior's going to graduate this year, and he's had the same ones since, I think, eighth grade.
I think there's some discussion too about not clucking them back and letting the kids have them over the summer as well. Because it's just, we, we use them so close to the end of the school year.
It's going to be such a pain.
To be able to collect them is, it's been a headache.
And I'm still, like, interested in what we do with the old ones, if we can have some kind of a program where kids could buy those at reduced cost or something.
We had that discussion, Net Ops, I think we need to sit down and finalize.
We had the old, we had the, like, the old desktops, I remember too. We would just get rid of them and they were.
Yeah, five bucks or ten bucks or something.
Because by the time they're, they're done using them, they're not.
Plus they're obsolete. Usually, it's eight to ten years.
It's been so long since we've done any type of textbook objects. These, these Chromebooks are well aligned with the classroom.
Oh, yeah.
Set of textbooks with cost, so they're probably.
I would say half a million dollars, probably, to estimate for a class of.
So I looked up and.
We have bought them so long.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other question?
Donation, Belinda?
Yeah, okay, so I'll read the donation. We have a donation from Nick D'Angelo to the Loomis Robotics Club, so we'd like to thank him for that.
Excellent.
If there's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Please.
All right, we're all items, A through.
Yes. A through J.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Items A through G. A second?
Second.
Thank you.
Do we need to pull it out so that I don't vote on...
Right. I think based on our discussion we had voted today...
So we've got to pull out E?
That you wanted to pull out the seventh and eighth grade.
Anything with seventh and eighth grade athletics?
So items...
C and E.
C and E would be the two items to pull out separately.
Thank you. Does somebody second that? I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Didn't you agree?
Jeffries already said yes.
I did. I did motion for that.
Right.
You wanted to say discussion. I just want to say that I appreciate the young ladies that are retiring from food service. They've spent their career taking care of our kids, generation after generation, and they're going to be hard to replace.
Oh, Rose. Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. I need to clarify, we're voting on items A, B, D, and F.
Yes.
Okay.
Ready for roll call?
I, can we call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye. Motion carried.
Now we have items...
C and E.
So motion approved items C.
C, yeah, a motion approved items C and E. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Go ahead, Tom. Give it to Tom.
If there's any discussion on that, and if not, can we call the roll on items C and E?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Motion carried.
Very nice.
Curriculum and programming.
Curriculum and programming. Motion to approve the items listed under curriculum and programming. Consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent. I believe it's A through E. F? Where's F? Oh, missed it. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on all these camps?
I just want to thank the people that go to the limits to put together these camps. I know Julie is here every year when we pull the camp, and every year I keep telling her I'm coming to camp, but she never sees me at camp. These folks put together some really awesome programs, and it's really great to see.
Okay, roll call, please. Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds?
Okay, motion... Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds, consent agenda items A through O, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Harden. So most of the items are change orders, which we kind of went over to some degree earlier in the meeting, talking about this is really not out of the ordinary, and it's, for the most part, they're tweaks, but the last gen item is the TDA pre-bond service agreement. And just to, for clarity on the board and for people in the room and those who might be listening, that is not, going into this contract is not necessarily meaning that we are imminently going to move forward with a bond.
Right. It's not saying it's February, it's May. It's not giving a date for November. It's not doing any of those things. It's just agreeing to the pre-bond service agreement.
And at this point, it isn't, the contract isn't costing the district anything.
Right.
It would only cost the district something if first we put up a bond and it passed, and then we decided to go with another company. Right now, TDA will provide pre-bond services for us for no cost. You know, they'll be doing some work for us.
Right. Thank you for that.
Which we have to go through anyway, regardless of when we would choose to put a levy on or not. I mean, we have to go through this process, so.
And pursuant to the request of the board at the last meeting, the calendar that was passed out earlier is incorporated into the contract as well, so there are clear deliverable dates.
Thank you.
Approximate deliverable dates as to what you're going to see when. And as you heard earlier, they plan on being at all your board meetings for the foreseeable future until you tell them to stop showing up.
Very good.
I have a question regarding the furniture. How many contracts have you bid, bid went out?
Yeah, I kind of handled the, because they're a construction manager at risk, they handle all of the bidding for that. Bidding was not, it was bid out in the four different packages, teacher office, fashion materials, student desk, and music. We did not receive any bids on the music package. That's not included in tonight's thing. For student desks and chairs, we only received two bids. For classroom and teachers, we had one bid from each of those. We did compare what their bids came into, what we estimated them to come into, and they were pretty much in line. And it's also kind of in line with the dollar per square foot that they've seen for other projects they give bid out.
Per square foot, the typical range is anywhere between eight and ten dollars. That's kind of the standard. The problem is, when we were going through some reductions in cost, that was taken out of the budget. We went from what was adequate down to about four hundred thousand dollars, I think it was, Gary, per building.
The original budget was nine dollars and twenty-one, nine dollars and twenty-one cents a square foot. It was like six hundred and ninety-seven thousand per building. And then fanning how we cut it down to four hundred and fifty thousand during the value engineering process, which was pretty unrealistic.
Now we're back up where we should be.
Well, Mr. Placo, there was four bids out, and is it not true? One, two, and three were in approximate order, under a million dollars? So my point is, if they're all close and we went with four, which is 1.3, why didn't we look at three instead of four?
I think you're looking at the different, there was different bid packages, not necessarily the lowest bidder. The different bid packages included different types of furniture. The bid package three, which is actually the bid package we're selecting, includes the flexible furniture for 21st century learning environments compared to bids one and two were more of the traditional, non-flexible, non-movable furniture. They cut out a lot of bookshelves and storage spaces and chairs, and it was basically the bare bones package for bids one, two, or three was including all of the items that were recommended from the committee that went through all of the furniture items. They went to OSBA and looked at samples down there. We had samples delivered to Hale Road and some of the quality differences too between the different pieces of furniture. Some of the bids that we received included a different type of, a lower-quality furniture that was not part of the architect specs, and they recommended us not using those lower-quality furniture because we didn't end up replacing that furniture much sooner and shorter warranty periods and things like that, so.
From my understanding is like bid package one and two, I think you were saying too, like you're literally talking like one chair in a principal's office. Like this is really, really bare bones.
Also, the difference in quality, I think, was fifty thousand dollars, the difference between...
Right, the higher quality and lower quality.
Well, no, we want new, we have, we're going to have great, great buildings, but I mean, I just want to make sure that financially, we're within our budget. I mean, 1.3 million versus the other three, which is almost four hundred thousand dollars difference. I mean, that's a considerable difference, and I don't want to know if that's...
But getting package one or two, we may still be spending more money if they're not giving us everything we need in it.
In the scheme of things, four hundred thousand dollars between a couple of buildings isn't a whole heck of, I mean, it is a lot of money, but it is, in the scheme of things, it's not.
It's a great deal, it's a great deal of money because if we're looking at putting a levy on, we want to make sure that the community know that we're using their dollars in the right sense.
Well, and these are our bond dollars. We're not...
Yeah. And that's the reason why we're going with the higher quality. We don't want to be replacing furniture in the next couple of years. We're trying to do, we're trying to do it right.
Right. So just to tie into, I certainly understand what you're talking about. It's best value versus lowest price. It's kind of what we're talking about. But when Mr. Miley and I went with Mr. Winter to Loomouth, as we mentioned earlier, we went to one of my old classrooms, and a desk was there from the time that I'm sure it was there, which I even sat on. But, you know, the point is that the building was initiated in the sixties. I was there in the seventies, and it's still here in, you know, two thousand... Means the quality is good. Right, the quality was, right.
Because it's about the high quality.
Right, so the bottom line is if we're able to, you know, it's not nothing, the difference is not nothing. We should be taking that over there and saving money. Well, I'm not sure about that.
Because it also, I mean, there's no doubt historically, the furniture that districts bought was high-quality in that it was durable and lasted forever. It was not high on the comfort scale.
That's true.
And if anybody would go back and try to sit, I always had teachers who were always saying to me, "Mr. Riley, please sit still." And I somehow took that personally. I think it was the furniture that was my problem. That's my theory.
And you're sticking to it.
Run with that.
The stuff lasted forever. There's no question about that. And you can still buy at that six dollars a square foot number or five fifty a square foot, that furniture. It will last forty to fifty years. The difference, though, is I think what the district looked at was what's going to be best for the education students and allow teachers to move that stuff around. A lot of times, the furniture that you're talking about was harder and heavier to move. Nowadays, a lot of the stuff is on wheels so the kids can move seamlessly into groups, get back into direct instruction, turn around, face a classmate. So you're getting something dramatically different than what perhaps some of us went through back in our youth.
We owe it to the community to put in new things in the new buildings.
Everything does have to be...
It's like, it's like the football field. We do the redo the football field. We're not going to put in our old goalposts or, you know what I mean? It's just, there's a time where, when we have the opportunity, and it doesn't happen very often in our district, where we're able to pass a bond, we got to do it right. And part of doing it right isn't only the shell of the building, the brick and mortar, it's what we put in it.
I think a lot of it is also, we designed curriculum and we designed the facilities to be used in a certain way, and if we don't have the furniture that goes with that level of instruction or that type of instruction, it doesn't serve its purpose anymore, and so I think...
I believe we would, it would bid number three as well, or bid number two. And Garrett, I would like to remove item M and put it on its own separate, please.
The furniture bid?
And I also want to talk about the sensory room. Can you explain what let the community know the sensory room?
Sure. So in the, in the two new buildings, both at River View and Parkside, we have specialized classrooms in both of those, going to be housed in both of those buildings. One is classrooms for our students with multiple disabilities. The other building will house, that will be at River View. At Parkside, we will have classrooms for our students with autism, as well as our students that have social, emotional, behavioral disabilities. The majority of these students with autism have sensory needs.
Yes.
As well as students with multiple disabilities, and the students that have the social, emotional, behavioral issues will also benefit from the sensory rooms. They have strategies and supports actually built into their IEPs that are written into their IEPs that need to be carried out on, whether it be a daily or weekly basis. The money that is being utilized for these classrooms is coming from our special education restoration grant that we received from the state. We did not have, we did not know we had this money initially at the beginning of the year. We received this money. There are certain limitations. There are guidelines, what it can be spent on. This is actually a very, in my opinion, a very good use of the money because these needs have to be met in some way, shape, or form. So having a classroom, not only will it benefit the students with disabilities, but it can be accessed by other students that might need breaks throughout the day, et cetera, as well. But the money is...
But the money's not coming from...
Correct.
Okay.
There's one thing I want to mention too with the furnitures. If you use the formula of even the top end, ten dollars a square foot in each of the buildings, seventy-five thousand square feet, you're looking at, in line with this formula, it'd be about 1.5 million dollars to adequately buy enough furniture and the right quality furniture for the building. So we're not, we're not offline on that. We're actually, what's the total we have?
1.3, wasn't it?
The total, it was like 1.351, yeah, 1,351,000, including now the furniture, but the same R.
About ten, ten dollars a square foot, so we're actually a couple hundred grand lower. What the industry says, says that would mean.
I am done. Okay. So the modified motion is to approve things on, the items on the Buildings and Grounds, items A through L and N through O. Any other discussion on those items? Can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, motion to approve the recommendation, item M, furniture bid. Any discussion on, any further discussion on that? Can you call the roll?
I'll second it.
Thank you. With that, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Nay.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye. Motion carried.
Let's take this to the Board of Education update, if anyone's got anything. I just want to say the Hoops for Hope is tomorrow in the Field House at seven o'clock. It's the teachers against the Lake County First Responders. That's three-dollar donation asked at the door, and all the proceeds are going to the Riverside Veterans Memorial. Belinda and I will be there helping.
Also, Mrs. Harden, I did contact Mr. Bleat. So that Senior Project Day is Wednesday, noon 29th at seven.
Excellent. Thank you.
And before our next board meeting, we will have our egg hunt on the thirteenth of April.
At two.
Come out to the egg hunt. Fourteen thousand eggs.
We've been out there some serious weather chuff.
Lot of Canadian, lot of Canadian games.
Maybe it'll snow.
Oh, it's been terrible days. All right. Has anyone else got anything else for us? What time's the egg hunt?
Two o'clock.
On the thirteenth of April?
Jack, you referenced it.
On the thirteenth?
Yes.
There's a home lacrosse game.
No, not.
At one o'clock that day.
It's going to be interesting.
What's on at one o'clock?
There was a home lacrosse game.
There wasn't. Four months ago, it was scheduled.
It's definitely on my calendar.
April 13th at two, yeah.
Oh, the egg hunt's five minutes.
The lacrosse games are not.
They can do it at halftime.
Let's see if you can...
Might want to look.
Well, we could always go back to the front of the, which we used to do.
Just push it later. Games are ninety minutes. Just, you know.
What time do they start?
One. Looks like it's only Varsity playing.
Two thirty?
Unless they had a JV.
Is that their first game?
No, their first game was yesterday.
How did they do?